Good evening. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, City of Tulare, staff and council members. Good to have everybody here for our 5:00 PM special meeting on June 2nd, 2025. So we will call to order and we will start with our study session. And I'll read this real quick. Comments at the special meeting are limited to items listed on the special meeting agenda. If we have any speakers on these special meeting items, each speaker will be allowed three minutes per item. For those that wish to provide public comment while not physically in attendance, you can call 559-366-1849 and the clerk will assist you. Please note that there will be approximately a 20-second delay in broadcast for viewers, but when calling in, please mute your device and work with the clerk who will facilitate your call. So with that, in our study session, as we have our 2.1 fiscal year 2026 preliminary budget review with Mr. Mondell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Good evening. It's great to be here with you. As you know, this is our, another study session we've had on the budget, one of several. This evening, we all have Mark Roberts, our CFO, and Jacob Del Sid, our Budget Manager, sort of tag-team the presentation. What you're going to see this evening is, in large part, familiar to you. It'll look very similar to our last budget presentation. There'll be some introduction of a few more new bits of information, and there are some revision into the numbers, and staff will review with you those changes. Again, as we've talked about before, this is a budget process, so we do anticipate some additional revisions in the budget. Hopefully, nothing significant between now and budget adoption, which we're proposing to occur at our next council meeting. So this evening is a great opportunity for you to ask questions, if, provide direction if there's things that you want changed or added. Please feel free to let us, you know, work on those items for you. You know, by and large, the budget's looking very similar to how it looked at our last presentation. We're still showing a modest general fund surplus. The number's still in flux, in part because, one, you may have direction for us this evening. I've talked to a couple of you, and I think some of you are going to share some ideas, and that would change that. As well as, we're still working through some transfer issues. We're still examining, do we feel like we have the right amount of money transferred for fleet, for example, in some other cases? And so, we still need to do a little bit of work there. You'll recall at the last, in the last weekly report, I mentioned receiving a letter from the state, they had some questions about when the state, through Senate Bill 1, does revenue sharing with the cities for road-related projects, we're required to provide a certain amount of match of general funds, and we have a historical practice of doing that. I think that they've not read some of our audit correctly, and so we reached back out to them in the past week or two with our auditor, and both the auditor and the city staff are in alignment in terms of what we think we've donated, or not donated, but committed to those projects, and we're waiting to hear back from the state. And so, in our opinion, that issue hopefully should be resolved. We haven't heard back yet, but we'll continue to proceed as if we are operating correctly on that matter. And so with that, one of the things I want you to consider tonight is, we're going to go back at the end of the presentation and review the additional CIP projects. You remember that slide from before where we have all of our regular CIP, our road projects and a number of other things, and then we had a sort of special list of additional CIP, which was about $3 million and change. In the current budget, we're showing the possibility of adopting a deficit budget because we're proposing or recommending we load all of those projects because they're one-time funded projects. We have a general fund surplus reserve above our 25%, and so we were suggesting using some of those dollars to cover those expenses, but we don't have to do that. If you were to decide you don't want to fund any of those projects whatsoever, then we would have that surplus. And again, remember, Mark Roberts last time described to you the difference between using one-time dollars and adopting a deficit budget versus a deficit operating budget. We're not proposing to adopt a negative or deficit operating budget. That's a different thing. So anyways, yeah, yeah.
Can I ask just one question? With that in mind, can we adopt a balanced budget and still go back and do, use reserves for purposes that you indicated without incorporating those at this time into our budget?
Yes, we could. And so, for example, if you decided you didn't want to fund any of those projects at this time, but let's say, well, let me, yeah, yeah, let me describe it a couple of different ways. If you were to adopt a budget, not at this meeting, right, but let's say the next meeting, that incorporated all of those projects, those additional CIP projects into the budget, you would be adopting those projects, you'd have, you'd be using general fund surplus reserves to fund them, so you'd have a negative budget, but that doesn't mean we actually will do those projects, right? Just because you adopt them in the budget doesn't mean we're going to be able to get them all done. So all of those projects would still have to come back to you in the future. Some of those projects, as we work on them, you know, we might not be able to get to all of them, for example. Some of those projects, as we work on them, we might find out, oh, they're going to cost a lot more than we thought, and we stop or we bring it back to you and ask, do you want us to continue? Some of them might come in less expensive. We found a way to save money and change the scope, and so, in any case, all of those would come back to you. Alternatively, to your question, if you were to decide to not adopt any of them at this time, you could choose to move them forward later. Let's say at mid-year, we can come back in the March timeframe and say, hey, is there any of those projects you want to bring back on? I would, I would say that's also fine. There's a couple of projects, if you wanted to do that, that I would encourage you not to take that approach, because keep in mind, if you don't adopt any of them now, that means we probably don't work on them, right? We don't have budget authority, there's no dollars there, so we're not really working on them anymore. You could, you could alternatively say, I don't want to adopt them now in the budget, but I want you to keep working on them, just don't spend any money, just spend staff time, don't hire consultants, don't do anything else you might have to do to figure those projects out. That's why, if you wanted to take that approach, I'd want to talk specifically on which ones, and some of them I'd say, I would recommend you include this one, but this one, we could take that approach, right? Okay, so at this point, Mark, I'm going to turn it over to you and Jacob.
I'll give Jacob a moment to step up to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, member of the council.
Thank you, Mr. Mondell, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. It is a pleasure for our Budget Manager, Jacob Del Sid, and I to present the third preliminary budget to you this evening. Before we begin, I'd like to again thank Jacob for his great work in putting together the information before you. Excuse me. Preliminary, oops, I just jumped down. Preliminary total city revenues, preliminary city revenues are approximately $186.6 million. Transfers in are $11.2 million. Estimated expenditures are $179.4 million, and transfers out are approximately $11.2 Before we jump into the meat of the presentation, I just want to say that, in the interest of time, to allow for more discussion, for the most part, we will be reviewing only the differences in the high-level totals from the current year's and next year's preliminary budget, since we've already provided this information to you twice. So we're just going to be hitting the highlights, we're not going to talk about the details and the drivers. If you have any questions about that, we are happy to answer it, but we want to allow for as much debate this evening as possible. Jacob will, at about the midpoint of the presentation, talk about the significant changes from the second version of the preliminary budget to the current version, however. Preliminary fiscal year 2026 general fund revenues are projected to be $73.3 million compared to the adopted estimated $66.3 million for the current fiscal year, a $6.9 million increase, while transfers in have decreased from $864,000 from $922,000, I'm sorry, have decreased $864,000 from $922,000 to $58,000. These totals are unchanged from the prior version of the preliminary budget. Preliminary general fund expenditures total $69.7 million, a $7 million increase over the current year's adopted total of $62.7 million, with transfers increasing from $5.9 million to $7.1 million, a $1.1 million change.
So I know Mr. Roberts mentioned we wouldn't cover all the details of each slide, but I did want to highlight a change in this MNO, specifically the expenses and transfers out. So at the May 20th meeting, workers' compensation premiums were categorized as transfers out. For this preliminary review, we've classified them now as internal service charges under maintenance and operations. So there's an increase in maintenance and operations from the preliminary budget that we saw at the May 20th meeting, and a decrease in transfers out. This reclassification has no net impact on the budget at all. So it was the same amount that we moved from transfers out to MNO, so there's no net impact. I just wanted to point that out to the council, so they're aware.
Combining preliminary general fund revenues, expenditures, and transfers results in a use of fund balance of $3.4 million. However, as with the previous preliminary budget version, operating revenues and transfers in exceed operating expenditures and transfers out, resulting in a preliminary budgetary Except for changes due to the aforementioned movement of workers' compensation premium charges from transfers to internal service charges and updated utilities costs, the departmental expenditures are largely unchanged from the prior preliminary budget. So we had to make some adjustments for utilities costs to just one of the refinements that we do, and as Jacob just mentioned, we also added workers' comp. There were very few, very few, if any, other changes to departmental expenditures. I think overall, we may have changed eight or 10 accounts amongst all the departments combined. Oops, and there is part two, I apologize.
So I'd like to touch on those significant changes that Mark just mentioned. For expenses and transfers out, we did increase CIP transfers by about $630,000. This was to account for annual street projects that weren't being accounted for in the previous version, and we also added the $180,000 for the old library demolition that was, that we didn't include in the previous version. Like you mentioned, citywide utilities for communication, this accounts for landlines, AT&amp;T, Wi-Fi, all those types of bills citywide. We included those, that expense by about $150,000. Community services had some line items that they wanted to increase, specifically overtime for concert staffing, landfill fees, and short-term rentals and leases. And we also removed the annual transfer for surface water management fund, which is an annual transfer that we make every year, but we removed that this year.
And the reason for the removal of the transfer for surface water management fund is, upon analysis, staff determined that there was sufficient fund balance in the surface water management fund, so we suspended, it's not a permanent removal, we suspended the transfers from the general fund, water fund, and wastewater fund, which subsidize Here, for transparency, we reflect the council member appropriations for travel and advance expenses and community improvements within each council member district. At the, at the prior, at the prior meeting, council members had asked about the detail which we can happily provide to you if necessary, or the fiscal year-to-date information if desired.
That's already been provided in the weekly report.
I thought that might have been the case, just wasn't completely sure. Thank you. Proposed personnel changes have not had, the positions change and the reclassifications previously referenced have not changed. Refinement of costs, estimated costs has resulted in a slight decrease, approximately $15,000 in the estimated annual costs of the positions. As I believe I may have mentioned in the, during the prior workshops, these are the estimated net annual cost for the reclassifications and annual cost for the positions. This is not, these are not the totals, at least with respect to the additions. These are not the total costs included in the budget, as we do not expect those positions to be filled on day one, they're more likely on average to be filled at mid-year, so that's what we assume. We call that a vacancy rate, we assume a 50% vacancy rate for those positions. And the fleet recommendations are completely unchanged from the prior version of the preliminary budget. Combined for the general fund, they total $1.5 million, $1,452,500 to be exact. And again, the preliminary general fund budget currently reflects a use of fund balance of $3.4 million, but has an underlying budgetary surplus with operating revenues and transfers exceeding operating expenditures and transfers out. For council's information, we'll briefly review the utility enterprise funds budgets, starting with the expenditures by category. Salaries and benefits combined for the utility enterprise funds are estimated to be approximately $11.1 million. Maintenance and operations, or MNO expenses, are estimated to be $31.8 million. Capital outlay, $607,000. Debt service, $12.2 million, for a combined total of $55.7 million. Those totals for solid waste and street sweeping, wastewater, and water are $13.8, $28.8, and $13.1 million respectively. Here you can see that the solid waste and street sweeping has an estimated, preliminary estimated surplus of $505,000. Wastewater has an estimated surplus of $3.5 million, and water has an estimated surplus, estimated use of fund balance of $900,000. The surpluses of the solid waste and wastewater funds went up from last time, and the deficit for water went down as a result of those, I'm sorry, for wastewater went up, and the use of fund balance for water went down due to the aforementioned suspension of the transfers to the surface water management fund from, the suspension of the transfers to the surface water management fund from water, wastewater, and the general fund.
Can, can you say that one more time?
Yes. The wastewater surplus, the wastewater surplus went up slightly from the prior version of the budget, and the water, use of fund balance went down because we suspended transfers. I think the water, one transfer is about $704,000, and I think another is like $450, I think water is about 700, and the wastewater one, I think is 400 or 450. So taking those out increases the surplus where you have a surplus and decreases the use of fund balance where you have that.
And what is, what is that amount?
The, again, water, I believe, is about 704,000, and wastewater, I believe, is There were, there were some offsetting changes to the accounts for the things that we mentioned earlier, utilities and workers' compensation, but, but those had an effect as well.
These pages aren't numbered, but under expenditures by category, you had solid waste and street sweeping combined, and I know when we, when we branched off the street sweeping, we had projections as to what kind of savings we'd have by doing that. That's not reflected here. Can anybody answer that question? Did we realize the savings that was projected by using the private sector to do that as opposed to?
Yes, we did. We keep street sweeping in there because we have the expenses for the contract, and we let them dump at the yard, so we pay the disposal fees for the trash that they pick up. So street sweeping is still shown in there as an expense, and if you look at the receipts, there is a separate line for street sweeping, but we are realizing the revenues that we had anticipated.
And before I continue, Mayor, did I answer your question sufficiently? Okay, thank you. Oops, too far. Okay, oh, there we go. As with the general fund, proposed personnel changes are also not different, except that the costs have come down slightly. With respect to the principal accountant, the, there is a discussion, we are determining, we're working with the Department of Human Resources to determine whether or not that cost will be shared, but this is the, this is the total annual cost of the position itself.
Isn't that totally a BTO obligation at that council?
No, no, it has joint responsibilities. I hear where you're, and I'm sorry, I didn't get the joke before, before I answered. I could be a little slow on the uptake. Fleet recommendations have also not changed. Both our expansions, recall that previously that the first vehicle, the three-quarter ton truck with a toolbox, was budgeted this year, but it was not sufficient, the budget was not sufficient, so it's been rebudgeted, and that's for a new crossconnection specialist, and the meter technician position that's being added this year would require a half-ton truck with toolbox, which is estimated to be $55,000. So we again wanted to show you the projects as prioritized that council has approved moving forward. Again, to refresh your memory, these projects have been approved as compliant with the general plan by the planning commission.
And I'd also like to add that we did bring this to the May 6th meeting, however, this time around, we did incorporate council direction, and I have a list of the things that we changed from the first version. We added the parks master plan implementation, and we used $50,000 from the women's clubhouse renovation cost to fund that or to show that we were costing that. We moved the Centennial Park, Centennial Parking Lot project from priority 13 to 5. We moved Station 61 concrete replacement from priority 10 to 6. We added annual, the annual street maintenance projects that we had previously left out, and we also added the old library demolition. However, that needs prioritization from the council, so we'd like some direction on where you'd like to prioritize that. And we wanted to give the council ample time to discuss these projects and give us direction for inclusion in the budget.
And I would suggest, council, you know, certainly if you have any questions at this point, or you'd like to discuss it, we can, or if you want the staff to finish their presentation, we can come back to this, however you like to proceed.
We're about one minute from finishing the presentation, so they might as well wait unless they really, really, really want to talk about it now.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. And finally, our next steps include final adjustments and refinements. I know, I know you may be wondering why we always have adjustments and refinements even we're approaching the adoption of the budget, but we always do that to the very, very end. Some known possible additional adjustments that we may be made, the city manager mentioned potential transfer to the, to the fleet fund, the fleet replacement fund to shore up the balance there, the reserve there, to, so we can begin internally financing vehicles completely on a strategic basis rather than a financial basis. We may make some adjustments to, to some CIP transfers. We still need to make one final review of internal service charges, including health insurance, and savings and effects, including savings from the, from the employee health clinic. We'll be doing a final departmental review, a review with the departments regarding their individual budgets, with most of the departments, or at least a couple. We'll continue to refine revenues to see if there's any opportunity to remain conservative, but squeeze a little more out of there, including a possible increase to the utility users' tax revenue. It's $9.8 million as of today. You may recall that we got a downgraded or a reduced estimate of the revenues, but then staff recognized that that estimate looked low, had it reviewed, and we got a much higher projection, but we're waiting to see what happens this year to see if the current year's projection comes to fruition before we go any further with the existing, with the next year's revenue projection. We're looking at grant revenues, including for the homeless encampment, and I believe that is it. Yes. That concludes the presentation. Council is happy to answer your questions and seeks your direction upon conclusion of discussion.
If you pull up the CIP list again.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, thank you.
If I can, real quick, Mark, and as many notes as I have, I'm kind of going back and forth here. Going back to Dennis's question earlier, and if I'm understanding right, so we have the operational budget, and in the operational budget and what we had presented the beginning of this of a deficit. I guess what I'm trying to say is, when you said about the CIP projects, is that coming back or tying into this 3.9, $3,916,835?
Yes, that's exactly correct.
Okay. So I have some further questions on that, but I don't want to jump to the conclusions with it amongst council members' questions and so forth, but I do, I do want to, and just council members as well, as we kind of go through this, and I want to hear everybody's input and give everybody a chance, I want to circle back to that one. And then, I have some questions, but it's not fair if I jump in front of the orders, so I'll pause with mine, and then if we're, yeah, true, I know. But I, I want to give chance of those that have their questions and kind of go around the group. Are we at that point to where we can do that? So I'll start with Vice Mayor Harold.
My only question at this point was, what happened to Station 64?
Yeah, as we, I think as we discussed last time, we're not ready at this point to fund anything on Station 64. If you remember, last time I shared that we have an existing piece of property where the fire station could go. We have some concerns about the location because we don't control Mooney Boulevard, and we're not certain whether Caltrans would give us a designated signal to be able to activate when we need to be able to access that facility with our emergency apparatus. So we've tasked the fire department with figuring out where could be another potential site, and we're not saying that's not the site, but we still have to work with Caltrans to figure out if they would give us the control that we need of that location, that's at Cross and Mooney. So they're in the process of working with our GS team to figure out other potential locations, because wherever you put it, you've got to start figuring and calculating a response time, right? And each site is a little different because of road systems and train tracks and schools and all the other things that are in the way. So that's one thing they have to do. The next thing they have to do is they got to start doing planning, internal planning for getting ready for a consultant we would hire to actually start designing the facility. So they got to start thinking long-term about their space needs, you know, what kind of space do you need, what do we think our long-term projections are for the fire station, and what kind of apparatus do we need? So they got to do all that preliminary planning work, and then once we hire somebody to go out, let's say this, ultimately, this isn't the best site, then we hire somebody to start identifying the site and placing offers on the property. So that whole process probably takes us a year just to get that done. Then we're ready to go out and hire the architect to start designing the project on that specific site, which ultimately leads us to getting the cost estimates and then finishing the construction drawings and bidding. So we're not ready to move forward with that piece of the project yet.
Like I expressed before, my concern is, we're growing so fast out east of town that response time now from Station 61, say, to Mission Oak is 12 minutes, 13 minutes? Any ideas, chief?
I can get you that data, but I don't have that off the top of my head, no. It depends on the time of day and traffic, but.
If it's Sunday morning around 11 o'clock, it's going to be a lot longer. And then they're going to have to go up to Tulare Street and go about our new roundabout. So I'm just curious, I think it's, it's a critical issue that we get that other station out there and in operation as quickly as we can.
We're fully in agreement with you, which is why I've tasked the fire department with expediting their exercise. And secondly, you'll recall that when we adopt, we didn't adopt, but when the, when the standards of coverage study was presented to you, there was no presentation that said, this is such a matter of urgency, you must build the fire station tomorrow. It was all agreed upon in that study that we know it's coming in the future, we know we need it, we've talked about having it online somewhere in the next three to five years, but we know we've got to do preliminary work to be able to get to that stage, so that's why I've tasked them to move as fast as they can and getting the work done they have to do before we go out and hire somebody to do the other work.
Is it a possibility that some developer may give us the land?
Yes, it is. That's the other side of the equation is, you know, even though we're going to be looking at, you know, normally the way this works is they do exactly what I described to you, then they start identifying basic general areas. We might identify a property in this quadrant or that quadrant, but then what we do through the planning process and Mario's team is we let developers, as they're coming in, process and Mario's team is we let developers, as they're coming in, looking, if it's a small subdivision, 40 homes, no. But if you get a large subdivision, 2, 3, 400 homes, yeah, you could start having those discussions about, we'd like you to contribute land towards the fire station. And so that's part of the equation, too, that we've got to start working through to, you know, to see if that, that's the best scenario is when somebody donates the land.
Vice Mayor, if, if you get a developer that wants to discuss the possibility as part of that donation of land, you can include the other side at Mooney and Cross as part of it.
Hundred percent, yes.
So that basically they take that, they can develop it in fashion they so desire, and they can donate to land to us to replace that.
Hundred percent. That's exactly our thought process.
Even though it's, say, three to five years down the road, could we, say, set some money aside right now to get to starting?
We could do that, but I will tell you that it won't be spent this year. So it would just sit there when it could otherwise be used for other purposes, because we won't be able to get to that part of the project quick enough. But I will tell you that, you know, let's say, once we identify and we figure out exactly where it's going to go and council agrees, this is where it's going to go, right? We can move forward much more quickly on getting the design done and going out to bid and everything. One of the next hurdles we're going to run into, as we've talked about before, is under our current charter, our charter only lets us do a design, bid, build process, right? So that's the traditional process. You design it, you go out to bid, you get low bids, then you hire the low bidder and they build it, right? We've talked before that we could save time and maybe money. It depends, because time is money. But if we were to modify our charter, I probably don't need this, actually, but if we were to modify our charter to allow other delivery models for construction, like a design-build process or construction manager at risk, there's other models out there, we might be able to shave some time and cost out of the process. We are talking internally about coming back to council in the future, maybe even, even as early as next year, March of next year, to look at a possible charter amendment, which could clean up a bunch of things that are outdated in the charter and maybe even add some other methods by which we can save the taxpayers' money.
Changing the charter, this is what we discussed before about changing some titles and keeping things.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yeah, yep.
Councilman Segal?
Well, to follow up on the fire station idea, I think what I was just talking to Vice Mayor about was placeholder in regards to, you know, a little bit of money, just so that people understand that that's a goal that we're heading towards. Because right now, you look at this, Laysa's not even listed on there. So, I mean, something just to be able to say, look, it's, it's on our mind, you know, there's a lot of other things that have to take to fruition, that have to happen. So, I mean, I think a placeholder in here to list it, you know, I don't know what can be done between now and then, if some updated renderings, ideas or things. I know I saw renderings years ago of the fire station, potential fire station. So anything that just keeps it in the mind of the public, hey, we got you, we understand, you know, it's, it's on, it's on our mind and it's part of the process. I think minimally, I think that if there's a way to put that in there, I definitely would support that effort.
Well, you can definitely, if, if this is our special CIP list, if you were to go back to our standard CIP list, you'll see there's a lot of projects in the CIP that are not fully funded, right? We might list a project and say, well, it's going to be developer-funded, right? So we list funding sources, but we know it's not going to be funded as part of this year. It might be funded part of '27 or '28 or '29.
Right, so wherever, wherever fits, if it fits on this list or the other list, I think, I think the Vice Mayor would support that effort to have it on the books.
We could definitely put it on the list.
And then figure out as, as things move forward.
Yeah, we could definitely add it as a line item on the list.
So, but going to the CIP here, I think for me, I think that, just so I'm clear, and I think, I think the Vice Mayor tried to address this, if we were to, if we were to eliminate this list or not move it forward technically, then we would not be in the deficit that we are now, because the budget to run all, everything else is paid for.
Our operating budget is funded.
So, but these are extra goodies, I guess if you want to call them, or extra projects that some people have come up with, us, you, staff, everyone else has come up with these that need to be funded. And if they were all funded, then we would be in a deficit. And I think I heard you say at the last meeting that some of these may not be funded at all because you just don't have the staff time to get to them.
Some of them we might not be able to get to.
So, for example, the Olympic Square, which I think is on the next page, or the Olympic, Olympian Square, that's on there for a million or so. So that may or may not, I mean, there's talk about, like, the women's clubhouse to be privately funded or a joint partnership, maybe half publicly funded and half privately funded. But that project, for example, if we don't get to it next year, obviously, a million dollars wouldn't be expended. Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
So, so I think, I don't know if it's worth the exercise, maybe the 5, 10, 15 minutes it would take for us to say, hey, you know what, realistically, we don't think this project will work. But I do know, like, for example, Centennial, I think it should be Centennial Parking Lot, not Park Lot, that is a project, correct? So that, we've all talked about that being a safety hazard as well, as a priority. So I know it's listed at number 5 to make sure that that gets completed. Some of these realistically may not get completed. So we're in a situation where why are we kind of sweating over 3.9 million? If we were to take that one off the table, it would be 2.9 million. If we took a couple of other more, it would be 2 million, right?
Yeah.
But, so, so that's kind of an idea to throw out for us to, to consider. I mean, I have some ideas of some projects that I would have questions, like, hey, do we really think we're going to do this? But for me, I think priority for me would be the third, number 14, the master plan. I would like to get that in the top 5. Because I think for me, as I mentioned before, I appreciate the support of the council to add a little bit of money to some planning. This is a multi-year type of effort to try to accomplish some of those things in that regional master park plan. But we got to start somewhere. And, you know, the idea that I brought about a softball complex or maybe other things that come up, I would rather have that money in the, you know, in the top 5 so that it gets spent this year. I'm not sure how yet. I mean, I would say I'll work with the city manager and the council and the staff to figure that out. But that's an example for me that I would like to, to move forward, that particular one in the top 5.
There we go. So just to, to understand, we're talking, we're at the CIP list at the moment. Do you have any other budget questions or comments at this time?
Well, I have general budget questions, but I thought we'd, I thought we'd dispense with this first and then get to the regular budget items. I don't want to kind of start mixing them up. But since we've all been focusing on this, I know, I know Councilmember Maderos and Sayer may have comments on this project.
Councilman Maderos?
By and large, I know there's some other CIP projects that are in the works that are not listed here. By and large, I, I do have some concern on the items that are listed. I mentioned before, while I'm in, in favor of the approach we're taking on the women's clubhouse, I view, you've got the ROW, which is right-of-way.
Can you pull that slide up, please? Let's follow council as they're talking.
Predominantly, that $950,000 is not only to obtain the right-of-way or the property under which the women's clubhouse exists, but also the Rotary Skate Park. That is basically incorporated in there, too?
Yes, based on our last communications, they want us to not buy one, they want us to buy both.
And that $950,000 encompasses both those, is that correct?
It would. Actually, the numbers that we've been talking with them about are less than that. They're closer to $700,000, but they haven't signed the line on that yet.
Act of Congress. And the, the other thing is that for them to put in a certain amount of money, the city may also have to put in a certain amount of money. And then any further steps as it relates to the women's clubhouse would be under a program of private donation to get it to where it needs to be. But I, I would recommend being very cautious on this, that before significant amounts of money are being spent, that there's a clear path to where we're going. Because right now, you know, it's kind of like Nielsen's was. I mean, it, the decision was made by the owner in that situation to tear it down because it was beyond the level of bringing it back. And that decision's got to be made as to the women's clubhouse also.
Yes. So we have already investigated that. Councilmember Sayer spent money out of ARPA funds to hire the architect to determine whether it can be salvaged. The answer to that is yes, it can be salvaged. So we have, the architect has renderings, floor plans, cost estimates.
I've seen it, yeah.
Right. So the current thought on that project is exactly as you described. For example, if you included that in the budget, we would continue to move that project down the line. It doesn't mean we're going to, you're going to do the project. You haven't committed to doing it. It means that we'll keep working on it, and then we'll bring back to you in the future the whole proposal of how it would work. Here's the two pieces of property to purchase. Here's how much Union Pacific's putting in. Here's how much we're recommending you put in. Here's how much the private sector or, you know, would have to raise. Any other, any other variables. Here's grants, you know, I don't know all that yet because we haven't finished that yet. But we'd bring that back to you at a future date, and then you would tell us whether or not you like those terms and conditions and you want to move forward or not. You know, that's, that's when that decision would be made.
And the, I noticed the Cecil Berkeley Playground Replacement, there's no, no money to be expended in fiscal year '26, is that correct? But overall, that's $169,000.
Would you answer that question?
Cecil Berkeley, is that the one behind the community center? No?
Right.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, that one we pushed out because we're trying to get, and I'm still got fog, I just got back Friday, the one, the all-inclusive playground's our top priority.
Okay. And wait, we missed the opportunity there because I think that facility, the, the building, doesn't have air conditioning, does it?
No, I believe it does. The community center does, and the rec center behind it does.
Well, this is right behind your office. It was my understanding, all they have is coolers.
I can't verify that, but I thought it had AC, because we're running classes out of it right now.
Yeah, I know. My granddaughter was there last week, and I don't think they had air conditioning when they were doing the little dance performance.
Oh, okay. I could be mistaken.
Yeah, I was irritated with myself because at Centennial Park, that, the Boys and Girls Club facility, we added that on, which was, I think, a very good thing to do. And we could have done it with the...
We could have, but just recall, that wasn't a random decision in terms of, let's add it to this or the other. We had to do a cost analysis to determine which ones would pencil with the savings. So some projects didn't, some projects didn't.
Got it.
Yeah. I'm not, I'm not sure if this one would have, but I think they looked at that.
That's fine. And how will you prioritize the Olympic Square to make the decision to move forward? And what was that, a million dollars? Olympian Square?
You had it on the right slide, if you'd go back to it. Olympian Square improvements, 1 million?
Because its status right now is just conceptual.
Yes. So we have, we have conceptual cost estimates from the architect on that project.
Okay.
And the reason why it's currently ranked 13 is because while we agree as staff that it's an exciting project, it's not as critical to move, in our minds, and council may feel differently, but in our minds, it's not as critical to move that project forward right now. For example, one of the things I would love to be able to do is, if we can get the downtown special taxing district to go forward, we'd love to have a conversation with the downtown group to say, hey, are you willing to contribute any funds towards either the capital cost or the maintenance cost, right? But we, we haven't gotten to that point yet.
And why is the old library demolition, which I think everybody collectively agrees just needs to get done?
Yep.
Why is it the 16th priority?
Because we added that as of the last meeting. When you said just add it to the list, our expectation is you're going to tell us where on this list you want us to put that.
Yes, Jacob mentioned that previously. We just put it in because we didn't have a prioritization for it yet.
You know, we have four number ones, three number ones here. If everybody collectively agrees, I think we could add a fourth number one. Mr. Mayor, does anybody have any objection to that?
Is it the old library demolition?
Yes.
I would support that.
Needs to be done.
Everybody said yes. Was that a yes, Mr. Segal?
We're happy to change that. We'll make that a number one priority.
I think the way that you walked through that, Dennis, is very helpful. And as I said, I had some questions and thoughts. That, I think it's made a bit clearer, as we talked about a few items, that priority number one, and a priority number one, to me, kind of separates this conversation a little bit. What are priority number ones? And then there's the others. The, it, I don't want to overjump, but I'll just kind of start. So if you have other comments, or I'll go to council member.
I think that pretty much, I mean, we have to recognize this as an all-inclusive list of every community, I mean, improvement project we're doing, because we have others that we're working on that, that are very important. I know at least two that I have high priority on, and I think everybody can figure that out. And that's not included.
Those projects are included as part of the regular city CIP. That's already baked into the budget.
Got it, got it. Fine. And, and of course, Councilmember Sayer hasn't been left out, has she?
It's my understanding of what you said, Mr. Mondell, is that we can look at this list and prioritize this list. And you even have suggestions of which ones would be most important as a city, the whole city, to put at the priority list. Because each one of us sitting on this council right now have our own priorities. That doesn't mean they're the number one priority for our city.
Correct.
And so I think what we need to consider is, I mean, I went in the women's clubhouse at the top, but that doesn't mean everybody else does, right? So I would like to know, staff-wise, your opinion, which things are the most important for the entire city that we, we look at first.
Yeah, great question. I appreciate that. And, and I'll ask staff to chime in if I've missed, if I miss anything here when I say this. But I'll tell you from, from my perspective, some of the most important ones that are on this list. The pavement management study is huge. We haven't done one in, I don't know, maybe eight or 10 years. We have talked about the possibility of doing a sales tax measure next year. Everyone I talked to, when I, when I interviewed for this job and I drove through this town, the first thing I noticed was the pavement management, or the lack thereof. And that's been a function of not having adequate funding. It's not because we've dropped the ball, we don't know what we're doing, we, we didn't see the problems. We don't have adequate funding to take care of all of our roads. And the first step you, you do to be able to get to that point is you hire the engineers to come in and grade all of our roads. And you do that analysis because really, at the end of the day, when you make a decision about what road you're going to fund, I mean, there's all kinds of variables that go into it, right? There's philosophies that say you do the collectors and the arterials first. There's some people that might say, no, we do the neighborhoods first. There's some people that say, no, you do whatever the worst road is to the best road last, right? There's a lot of ways of doing it. But the vehicle by which you make those decisions shouldn't be just a political one. It should be based on engineering. That's the study that gets us there. And frankly, if we were to go and talk to the public about a sales tax measure, this is the document we would use to hold up and say, this is the way we would propose to these projects. You can look and see every year what roads are going to get done and how they're going to get done. And you can have those discussions and debate, and council ultimately would make the decisions. It doesn't have, you don't have to just take the engineer's recommendation. You can move them around. But you have a scientific, logical, rational basis by which you make those decisions. So for me, that's a hugely important project. I think another really important project in my mind is the master plan for the corporation yard. That's largely going to be funded out of other existing sources, but we need to have a general fund contribution to be able to kind of seal the deal and get that study going. You know, the public doesn't see our, our corporation yard, thank God. It, you know, half of the yard is in fair shape, and the balance is almost functionally obsolete. It is high and dry time for us to get that study done. Again, it's going to take some time to build a corporation yard, and they're very expensive. But you have to start somewhere, and now is the time to do that. I wish we had done that probably 15, 20 years ago. I'm not trying to be critical because I know we had other needs and other problems, but we're kind of at that point where we can't, we can't not deal with that now. You know, in my mind, this is not a huge project, but I'm excited about the wayfinding project. And the reason why is because, you know, it is already included in an adopted master plan. We're doing, a lot of the work we're doing now is stuff that's already been approved in master plans that we're implementing. And we're implementing part of the Parks Master Plan. I'm going to talk about that in a second. So wayfinding is a continuation of our branding effort, right? So we came up with a new logo and branding. The logo's shown up right here on the page, and we're starting to implement that brand throughout the city, right, on our letterhead, our business cards, our website, et cetera. Our vehicles will have that. But one of the things that wayfinding does is it directs people through town. So when you go through many downtowns, or not just downtowns, many communities, you go through Visalia, you go through other places, they'll have signage that's directional to say, you go this way for the parking garage, you go this way for City Hall, you go this way for the library, right? It's that kind of signage. I don't think it's critical that we build the signage necessarily right now, but I think it's a good idea for us to continuing the branding effort to design all of that. So we're actually in the design phase, the conceptual design phase right now. The consultant will have those drawings ready in the next couple of weeks. We plan on bringing those conceptual drawings... We plan on bringing those conceptual drawings to council, uh, probably, I don't know if it'll be July, it would certainly be by August. And if you like those designs, then we would move forward with the next phase, which is actually starting to prepare, like, lay, like, show on a map, where does all that signage ultimately go? We wouldn't implement all of it now, so some of it, for example, they've come up with some signage designed and if we're successful and fortunate enough to move forward with the entertainment district, we would incorporate those standards into that project. There's special signage for downtown, there's signage for other parts of the city, there's gateway signage off of Highway 99. So that project, I think you'll be excited when we show you those designs, so I'd like to include a little bit of money in that to be able to kind of keep moving that project forward. I would say, once we get to the construction document phase and we figure out where we want the signs, we might pause at that point before we actually go and build a bunch of it or maybe we build some of it, like, for exam- and the rea- and part of the reason why I say this is because this is sort of a self-funded project. So the way we would fund it, even though we would be using general fund dollars now, the way I'm proposing to fund it is bringing you two billboards on Highway 99, two digital billboards, one at the north and one at the south, and the lease revenue from those billboards will fund this project over time. So any money we would take from the general fund, we would replenish the general fund with those dollars from that program. So we get, we get dollars from signage to use those dollars to do signage in the city. Eventually, once that signage is paid off, that's another revenue stream that council can use for ultimately whatever purpose that it wants. For me, those are some of the two projects off of this. If you go to the next slide. Um, when we talk about, um, I think there's other, I didn't talk about somebody, but on the first slide, this slide, there's some very small projects, like, for example, this one, Station 62 fence project, that's a security issue. I think we can knock off some of those small ones, I think it makes sense for us to do that. On the park master plan implementation, I have no problem at all with council putting, setting aside 50,000 towards implementation. I would just remind council, we already are implementing parts of that master plan. Some of the projects, like Zomwalt Parks, finished, that was part of the master plan. We're working on the, um, indoor sports facility already, that's a, it doesn't have to end up being, but right now, we're doing the cost estimates and the operating, uh, pro formas for that facility as part of the entertainment district. That would be a driving project to help make the interd- entertainment district happen, which would generate revenue, right? So take a public project, but see if we can fund it with other dollars instead of general fund dollars and then use that project to generate more revenue so we could do more projects in the city, right? That project, the consultant is almost finished with their phase two analysis, which will present to council probably in the next couple of months. So I'm, I'm fine with the 50,000. I just want to remind council, we are implementing the parks' master plan. Um, we're getting ready to apply for a grant for Elk Bayou, uh, to try to see if we can do a master plan of the Elk Bayou area, a trail system with interpretive trails and bridges and, and those kinds of things. So that project is, if we can get that grant funded, we're trying to do that. Now, what we don't have currently funded, we're talking to people about the regional sportsplex. The way we're approaching that project is if we can get a developer to donate the land, it doesn't have to happen that way. I talked to you about this before, there's four components to that. The cost of the land, the cost of the capital cost of the improvements, the cost of the prome- programming of the facility and the maintenance costs. If we can wipe out one of those costs, then that gets us very far, very quickly. Um, we are going to bring back to council some options on where that could go. To be quite frank with you, you know, we're doing a ton of stuff in different places. We, we, we're, we are trying to see if there's a way we can move that project to the west side without any commitment. I'm just saying, we're exploring that with developers. I have a developer right now who's pretty interested in putting it on the east side. We talked to COS to see if we can do a deal over there with them, they weren't particularly interested in it. Um, so it's one that we still work on, we're not spending money on it. But if you put 50,000 in here, you know, my current thinking is we probably would move that towards the Elk Bayou project as a match to the grant. But if you wanted it specifically towards the regional sportsplex, you'd have to tell us that and then we would, you know, s- set that aside for that purpose. Obviously, you've already moved the demolition, I was going to agree and say the same thing. We've got the, if you approve the 180, we can get that project done right away. For me, those are probably my priorities. I like the women's clubhouse project in the sense that we've made a lot of progress, we've got the renderings, the, the cost estimates, UniPacific is right there, we're pretty close in getting them sealed in, so I think we should keep moving on that project. But I agree that at the end of the day, that's a project that largely is funded by the pub, the private sector. I don't think we're going to get private sector support for that unless we show them some of the commitments we're trying to make, like, we'll buy the land. And I think buying the land makes sense, whether we do the project or not, we should control that land. Uh, but I do think trying to get that project going makes sense now for a number of reasons. Also because that project is tied up in a, potentially tied up in a bigger downtown mixed-use project that I'm working on. So I think it makes sense to keep that project in the mix that helps me move the bigger mixed-use project potentially forward. You'll get, you'll get to see those projects here in the next couple of months. Uh, that probably is where my thoughts are, but at the end of the day, it's council's decision,
So, uh, appreciate walking through that and I, and I think, I absorb everyone's comments and think that's helpful. So going back, which, I think just overall sentiment, as we'd said about operational budget and an operational budget that is pretty much near balance, there's transfer of street funds that comes out of that, but I think to, what I absorbed in the sentiment is that, though we're coming back and saying, we're going to approve 3.9 out of general fund extra. So the conversation we had before, instead of nitty-gritty, if you want, I'll go to my comments, was, we don't have to take items off the list because this is kind of floating, things that come in right now we could do, things that don't happen. However, to the context, it grabs me different when we're telling the public and you're wanting the approval, I meant you're wanting, but from what I've, from what I heard earlier, was, wait in front of us, it's 3.9 million dollars. Uh, so that dynamic is what's just grabbing me and I, and the part that it's framed that we're voting on it, to me, I'm not, to me, makes it sound like it's, it's absolutely in the hopper because we approved 3.9 million dollars. Rather, I'm absorbing and it's grabbing that the conversation we're having, what you're asking, Mark, in fairness, is, okay, where's the priorities at? So if we move to what are number ones and we take that list up to number one, to me, that takes the bite off 3.9 million. I guess another part that I am, I'm curious about in its presentation, our CFO and COS, so what we're saying is, there's actual money in the general fund within our percentages, $3 million, if you will, that's there. But we're not treating that as a reven- we're not treating that to cover the source, we're saying it's $3 million deficit and then that's what we're going to use to pay for. Why, why is that not treated as a source to offset the expense and it still be considered a zero?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm not completely sure I understand the question.
So I guess what I'm saying is, is what I heard is, in our general fund reserves or makeup, there's at least more than $3 million that could be used. And we've got this CIP plan at three, let's say $3 million. Why is the CIP plan being presented as a deficit when that other fund couldn't be brought in as a source?
You mean the reserve?
Of course.
Yeah, okay. Well, first of all, I, I prefer to separate fund balance from reserves. Reserves are part of fund balance, not the other way around, because we have 15.3 million, which council previously designated as a reserve. We do have unassigned fund balance on top of that. I can't tell you what that number is, but I want to say it's somewhere in the 8 to 10 million dollar bar, ballpark, maybe north of that. We have unaudited fiscal year '24 numbers, we're in 2025. So there is fund balance and that's what I would hit first because the 15.3, that's for emergencies. The answer to your question is, that's effectively what we're doing. It's, it's, when we look at, when, from a finance perspective, when we look at a budget, we call revenues and transfers in collectively financing sources and we call expenditures and transfers out financing uses. Um, I've had a conversation with the city manager, uh, about, you know, how we, you know, we could look at it and say, okay, we're going to do the operating budget by itself, we're going to do the capital projects budget separately by itself, distinguishing the fact that we're using that fund balance strictly for capital projects so that council could say, hey, we adopted a, uh, positive, uh, a budgetary surplus, but we're going to take this fund balance that our good financial practices in the past have allowed us to grow for these important projects. You could look at it from that per- perspective, if you will.
So basically, we have revenues and we have expenditures. And from that standpoint, we have a surplus.
That is correct.
When you add this in-
When you qual- qualify it as operating.
Operating, right. When you add in these general fund project priorities, then we, we say, we've got this excess reserve that we want to bring in and use and transfer in to take care of what we want to go ahead and do, even though we, we, e- even though we have an operating surplus, it's not sufficient to allow us to do this.
Yes, and both what you and the mayor were saying speaks to what Mr. Mondell said at the last meeting and I think you touched on it in this one. Every now and then, you really have to use some fund balance. Otherwise, you're going to grow it to the point where people think you're hoarding money. Uh, and that's why when we developed a reserve that we did a while back and we set aside that 15.3 million, I recommended and council in its wisdom, uh, agreed to approve it as a range. So we know that if we hit the top end of that range, that really, we need to look at, at how we're managing the cities, the cities' funds. Uh, but yes, you do occasionally need to use your fund balance or you will grow it to 75, 80, 100 million dollars over time, which nobody wants.
And that's why I brought up before, and I think that may be where the mayor's touching, I don't speak for him.
Yes, yes, yes.
But I'd like to see us adopt a budget that shows we're balanced between revenues and ordinary expenditures. And, and then whatever else we're going to do with the excess reserve, we can use for the project so that legitimately, our constituents are aware that we're balancing the budget.
We could, I haven't done it that way because the, the manner we're bringing it forward is your, what you might call the, you know, the perform, the standard way that we're doing it, uh, that we, that most agencies do it. But we could probably find, I'm su- I should say, I'm sure we can find a way to reflect in the budget, here's our operating, you know, here's the operating part and here's the capital, separate from the fact that we have a separate capital improvement program budget, uh, or a sap- capital improvement program. We could certainly reflect it in the budget in a way that says, here's our operating part and here's our capital part. Uh, because what you'll see, you may, you may have noticed that there was something different in this version of the budget. Uh, it's the one that shows a fund balance and it actually reflects a column for reserves. That column is intended to just show the reserves, but we could probably modify that to put in additions to reserves, uh, charges for projects and things of that nature. So we could definitely reflect things in the way that you're saying you might like to, or you'd like to see them, if that's desired.
I have friends who are accountants, Mr. Roberts, and they, I, I appreciate what you're doing here, but I tell them all the time, there's, there's, the way accountants reflect it, that most people just don't understand. And then there's the common every, everyday, ordinary, common sense way, which the rest of us will.
And that, you, you-
I like that common, everyday, uh, manner that all of us can understand so that the public can feel the same way.
I've heard folks in the past, in, in my position, say, it's an accounting thing, you have to trust me. I will never utter those words. And by the way, just a, a slight bit of humor, I heard a joke one time that, uh, an accountant is an actuary who couldn't stand the excitement.
Yeah, so I do-
Oh, I'm sorry, it's the other way around, an actuary is an accountant who couldn't stand the excitement.
So to the point of the discussion, we could certainly, you know, we could adopt an operating budget and not adopt any of these projects and come back later. You know, adopt an operating budget that's balanced or has a surplus and come back later and deal with these in July or August. We, what we're trying to do is kind of combine them together and get them both done. So if you want to continue with that approach, we could say, okay, you know, only, only adopt, you guys could say, well, I'm only willing to adopt the ones that are ranked one through three or something like that. And, you know, you're going to, you're going to move some around, you know? So you could do that and say, if, and come back to us in second meeting in June and tell us what that number is and if it's a deficit of 1.4 million or whatever it is, that's what we're adopting. And then we'll separate, like Mark just said, and show somehow that we've adopted a operating budget that is balanced or has a surplus, but yet we also used fund balance to cover these one-time expenses.
But we have a surplus that's, that's being shown and, and I, I don't think it's healthy to have these project priorities and have a surplus that we're going to take and use, uh, use for some of these projects. While we, we don't want the public to believe that, that we're adopting a unbalanced budget. We don't want to artificially show that we've got this surplus that's there to spend when we have already identified needs
Yes.
that we have to spend this on.
Agreed.
So, uh, let's, my opinion is, let's work towards a balanced budget that, that everybody can agree on.
And, and to take, take what Mr. Mondell said a step further, we could, if, if council is prepared to move forward with the CIP, we could simply bring those forward as two separate items at the next meeting and adopt the operating and the capital budget separately.
That's balanced.
That, well, the operating budget would be balanced and then the, the CIP budget would be with the use of fund balance, uh-
Reserves.
Uh, just fund balance, yes.
Excess reserves that we should use for those purposes, yeah. I like that, thank you.
Um, and the reason I like that is I think it makes the messaging and the understanding clear amongst us. I, I feel like the five of us would all be on the same page with that. The, to perhaps finalize the CIP, so we have time to go into the other items. Sharing with council members, uh, we have this list and a little bit of, of where, as we're saying, is 3.9, that feeling towards that, that if perhaps we prioritize it, I like what was presented is what's our number ones, if you will, all, all our number ones. And that's the list that we have in front of us right now. The other items don't have to be taken off the list, but I think it's a, a better understanding, I think it's a clearer message and I think it incorporates better of a capital improvement budget, that we build the list of number ones.
Okay.
And that, that's just my opinion with that. What was mentioned in different conversations that I have of potential number ones, ADA compliance upgrades, annual trans-
Go back to the first slide, please.
Sorry, back to the first slide. Annual transportation pavement management, annual transportation maintenance, corporation yard master plan. Now with women's clubhouse renovation, what I understood in the deeper conversation is, is compared to clubhouse renovation, it was land purchase.
That's primarily what that is.
Okay. So, and not up to the 950, but I, the reason why I say that, I understand it's, it's in the wording and I think we're on the same page, is it's the land purchase with that. And my suggestion would be that, I thi- I think that to me is a clearer message.
We would just change it from women's clubhouse renovation to say, women's clubhouse land purchase or something like that.
Women's clubhouse, land acquisition.
Yeah.
Just to be clear, that depends on an act of Congress.
That will depend on an act of Congress.
So basically-
Railroad, city of Tulare.
So the railroad, the railroad has verbally-
So that means Washington would have to do something.
Yeah, so the, so UniPacific Railroad has said to us, they will not support the acquisition. They won't come out and say to Congress, we love this, go do this. But they won't object to it if we reach agreement on these numbers and we've reached preliminary agreement on the numbers, but it, I, it's still in their court, I haven't got anything back from them saying, we're good to go. So I'm worried that the number could change, I, I'm not saying it will, because we gave an appraisal and they said that appraisal works for us. They're in the process of vetting that right now. So let's assume they come back and say the numbers are good for the clubhouse, then we have to agree on a number for the, the skate park, but they've told us verbally, the per square foot cost in the clubhouse is whatever we agree on the clubhouse will apply to the skate park because they're right next to each other. So I feel like the 950 covers us, I put a little room in there in case it goes up a little bit. Once they've agreed on those numbers, that's when we got to go to Congress. And, and in front of Congress, what will happen is Congress will say to them, are you guys objecting to this? And they'll say, no, we don't object to the sale of the land.
If I could interject. When I was first elected to this position, within about two weeks, I received a phone call from Congressman Nunes's office. My daughter worked there at that time, she's not the one that called me. And the person was very excited because both houses of Congress were controlled by the Republican Party. And he wanted to let me know that as a writer or part of a funding bill, that Congress was going to approve this very passage, okay? There was no reason for me to believe that that wasn't going to occur considering how Congress was constituted. And how many years are we later? Six years and it still hasn't happened.
It might not happen, that's true.
So I just cautioned that.
Now, I guess for me, for me, just, um, to be practical, given that it's Congress, uh, hack congressional action, I think this is one of those examples that you mentioned, Mark, that we could hold off on it and then say, for example, because, you know, Congress is in the middle of a budget and I believe they roll over again, you know, December, whatever. I mean, I'm not, I'm not as quite familiar as their legislative calendar as I, there is in Sacramento. Come September, they're gone till January, right? We know in Sacramento. But, um, is, this could be one of- could be one of those where maybe next spring, there's a bill in Congress, and it's going to pass, and then that next spring is when we come back to Council and say, hey, it's ninety percent almost there.
You could.
And it's going to be seven hundred and fifty thousand, or whatever, the number gets worked out.
You could do it that way.
So is this one of those?
It could be that way. It, it.
That's the phone call I got.
So, so.
You're saying, take it off the books technically, but then leave it there.
I could see this happening one of two ways. I don't know, when they, when they come back, Union Pacific comes back to me and says, we're ready to accept the offer. It could, like, if you had the money in the CIP now, then I think I could move forward and say, Council's already budgeted this into CIP, so I can move forward with the purchase and sales agreement. We would start the process with Congress, with, with our lobbyists, wherever that's at. And they would tell us, okay, this was in, you did this in September, this is when it's, it's going to take effect. The alternative to that is, you don't put it into CIP. And when I get the purchase offers back from Union Pacific, I come and make, I have to come to Council, and then you guys take the official action to say, we're now going to budget that money for that purpose. I don't think it's a problem to do it that way. It's just a little extra step. So however you want to do it, I just know if you don't put it in CIP, I will have to come back to you. But I'll, I'll still work on it. I just can't expend any more public dollars on anything. It would just be my time, that's all, which is not a big deal.
I think that would just knock off the seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand off of that budget item.
I, I talked to our, our lobbyists the last time they were here. They felt more certain. I was here when that phone call came from Devin Nunes. My daughter was on the council at the time, and she was working on that specifically to try to get that to go through. We're so much closer now to that than we've ever been before. I think putting any kind of brakes on this is going to just, what we have to remember is this building is the oldest building in the city of Tulare. The longer we wait, the more we put it off, the more brakes we put on this project, it will begin to deteriorate. I mean, right now, it's a viable building. And if Union Pacific comes back to us in a month, and we can say, yes, the lobbyists felt that, that there was a really good chance that we could get this taken care of. What happened the last time was, it was on a, a rider on a bill. The bill went through the House, and it got stopped in the Senate. And so it's a different circumstance than it was at that time. So I, I personally think that any roadblock we put to this project is really detrimental to the success of bringing this building back to its glory.
So I think what we have in front of us on this item, to add a little recap, is we were, my suggestion was to push items to a number one and make it more clear. In that, the women's clubhouse renovation, there was a discussion of changing that to more of the women's clubhouse or land acquisition, because there before seemed more of an understanding around the land acquisition. Now, I think if I'm absorbing it right, as Councilman Segala is saying, to the, to the overall of kind of what we're talking about, of what's going to happen in a timeframe, is that something we want, if that's more than likely not going to happen or happen, do we want that in front of us where we're going to make a fiscal decision saying we're bar, we're borrowing, we're taking nine hundred and fifty nine, nine hundred and fifty thousand from the reserves? So I, I think I'll pause there and look perhaps for a consensus from us, is, I, I, my suggestion was, it's there, but it's land acquisition, and that's an understanding for it. And Segala's is that we don't have that on the, is that fair to say, just because the action isn't in front of us, that it would happen?
Yeah, I mean, it, it could go either way, but I don't think it's putting a roadblock. It's just basically saying, if Congress can do something in a month, man, that is amazing. That, that's not going to happen. So, so I think the issue is, if we get to the negotiations, I think there'll be enough time to come back to Council and say, hey, we got a plan, we need to fund it, and then go to Congress. I don't think that's more than a month delay, you know, so.
Why, let me ask you this. If, if, if staff knew right now that we could acquire both of those properties within the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar allocation here, would you approve it?
I think, I think, yeah, I mean, but I think what I understand is that, that there's multiple steps. And the first step is, one that we've overcome is that the railroad is interested. That's something that hadn't happened in years. So that's step one. The second step is now, hey, figure out how much we're going to pay for it. How much are we going to get? And then the third step, which is probably the most complicated step, is having Congress approve it. And so we're going into step two where they're negotiating. And all I'm saying is that, if we were to take that out, and the Olympian Square out as, as, that's almost two million dollars we knock off the three point nine. So, but doesn't mean that we can't come back in.
Yes.
August, September, November, January, and a, and an item on the agenda to approve that money for the project. That's all I'm saying is, is do we want to go in and say, hey, we're three point nine million down? Or if we remove those two projects, we're only down nine hundred thousand? Because those two, or one point nine, because those two are two million dollars.
I could see that on the Olympian Square. I, I understand your argument. But from the standpoint of, we know if they come in within this budget of nine hundred and fifty thousand, we have a consensus to move forward. So with that contingency, why don't we go ahead and just indicate, if you can negotiate this within that, move forward. You don't need us, you don't need to come back to us and have any delay whatsoever. Let's, let's keep that moving under those circumstances. So there isn't a situation to where we have a delay that hurts us as far as Congress is concerned, because there hasn't been prior approval. You, you yourself just indicated you would approve that. So let's approve it.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is that, if, if there's a concern about us going into the, because I, I've heard you the last few remarks saying, we don't want the public to know we're in a deficit. We want them to know that we have balanced budget. If we incorporate this, we're going to be in a deficit. So that's my only thing, is if we want to get away from that thinking. I have no problem voting on a budget that the community would say, hey, you guys were in a deficit, and we used reserve, a balance fund to get us to zero. I have no problem voting on that, but it seems that some council members don't want that appearance in the public, that they voted for a deficit budget.
No, but that isn't what I indicated. What I indicated, what I indicated was, operationally, let's have a balanced budget and use reserves for the, for this type of thing. So I, I think the objective and why we're doing this review list is, we're on the same page with that. Where we're at is on this line item, is there, there's a discussion of it being the land purchase. That's where we're at. So I'm going to put it to where if there's a consensus among the group, this, we're not debating that it be removed from the list. I think what I'm saying is that it's moved towards that priority. So we're, so we have a clear list in front of us of those priorities. To your point, it would add to that total. So I'm going to pull the Council on women's clubhouse, which I've understood to be the land purchase as we've described, looking for a nod that it, it goes towards the objective or, or not. So I'm looking for consensus if this is the land purchase. If we can acquire it within what's been indicated by the city manager, I want to approve it now so we can keep it moving forward and use reserves for that purpose, maintaining an operational balanced budget. Yeah, that's, I understand. Okay. Okay. All right, we have a consensus to that objective.
Keep it in there.
Okay.
So, Council, before we continue the conversation really quick, we're pulling up a slide. I just wanted to show you this, only in case it gives you any relief. What we asked, I asked staff to do is to look at the last, you know, seven to ten years of adopted budgets, so you have a sense of where we're at with the budgets. And so you can see that, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven years, three of those seven years, we had a surplus in the total budget that was adopted, and four of those years, there was a deficit, there was a, there was a deficit. Now, that doesn't mean there was a structural operational deficit. It could have been in some of those years, but it may have been that they just used fund balance like we're talking about now. So it's not uncommon that cities will use fund balance from time to time to fund. You know, in some cases, it may be, yeah, there is a deficit, and we got to pull it to cover operations. So I just want you to be aware, I'm not, you don't have to make a decision tonight about adopting a budget that is a surplus, or that is balanced, or a deficit. I'm just saying, it has happened in the past. So, thank you, Melissa. If you can go back to the CIP slides again now, and we'll get back to the discussion.
The city manager had listed city wayfinding improvements.
Can you go back to that slide?
The city manager had said Centennial, I don't remember if the, the city manager didn't say this.
I did not.
The pavement management.
It was mentioned, uh, Council was the, so I'm going to pause. Centennial parking lot. It's at a blank. I think Councilmember Segala had said of it this importance. It's at a five, so it's in between. Is this a number one, or does it stay where it, where it's at?
Okay, I can't remember. I mean, there's no cost. I mean, you guys have the money, or is that, there's no cost associated on it?
On the far right, it says seventy thousand dollars.
Okay, but is that, then why is it not into FY twenty-six costs?
It's questionable, I'm speaking. It's questionable as to whether it would be in that fiscal year or not. Is that correct?
Yes.
So if we make it a priority for next fiscal year, then it'll be moved over to the seventy thousand? I mean, to that.
Yes, you could do that.
Yeah.
Because I just think it's a prior, I mean, well, I think, you know, baseball season's almost over, right? It doesn't start again until next spring. So I think, you know, it would be something, if, if not now, we can revisit it in the, in the fall, winter, because I think, I think for me, it's a, it's a priority safety issue. Not only, only restriping the parking lot itself, but the, dealing with the exits, you know, it, it could, you know, save somebody from crashing. So.
We could do, so the exits and painting the curbs, we could do that as our normal operations. You don't need a special project for that. The actual parking lot would require the special project because of the cost for the materials. But if we wanted to focus right now on just repainting those curbs, we can work with engineering as far as what sites we need, and get those curbs repainted. We are at the end of the season, so it may be better for us to do those in the spring, right before it starts up again, so it's all fresh. But we could do with, do that without the major project. Remember, we removed the trees a few years ago and redid those spots, which, that was the really big issue for a long time, was the trees and all the bumps they created. So that would be up to Council.
I mean, I think I would.
This is the asphalt project, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I just want to be quick. So with that, it was a five. I, I endorse having that in the, as well in the, in the top list, provided it happens. But I'm going to go around to Council.
Fine.
Okay, we have a consensus with Centennial getting into the top category. If I'm correct, city manager, did you mention, mention Station sixty-one concrete project?
It was the pavement management.
So I, I didn't speak to that one, but that is the one where the, the fire department has requested for several years now to replace all the concrete behind Station sixty-one. I don't believe that's what's necessary, based on staff's review, other staff, department staff's review. We think we can replace a section of the concrete, and that's what that is.
So is there, council members, like I said, it's kind of a one or stay on the list. I, I would endorse that that stay as a one for improvements to our fire station, but I'll look to other council members.
Based on recommendation, I'd agree.
Definitely, the, the ramp in the front needs to be repaired now.
Okay.
Because it was, needed to be repaired four years ago, and it's, hasn't gotten any better.
So moving the list of bumping into this top priority category is, the next one that, that was mentioned, I think from Councilmember, was the Parks Master Plan, as described by Mr. Mondell. To understand this, it's fifty thousand. It's a limited dynamic with this. It's at number fourteen because of that limitation. Is that something that we want to move into that top priority, or leave it where it stands?
Well, I'd prefer that it get moved up to whatever, one, two, or three, whatever that top tier is. And then I, I know that the city manager explained some thoughts about how to use it. I also have some thoughts that I will be bringing to Council in a form of a council item. But particular, the, the reasoning for me was to, to deal with the softball complex, and do some planning, do some design, and other types of things as to what one would look like in the city, particularly on the West Side. So that was the, the reason why I kind of pushed for that funding.
I agree with Councilman Segala.
Okay. I, I will endorse the Parks Master Plan implementation. So that gives us three. The last one was the old library demolition. That one has already been.
Dealt with.
Dealt with. So what I've understood in that list, to Council, is that it bumps into a priority list that gives direction to come back with the project of those. The other items, we're not taking them on the list, but that's not going to be in front of us at this time for an approved budget, as discussed here tonight.
Yes, and as we continue to work through the budget, I also heard Council saying you would like to have a balanced operating budget. So I'm going to interpret that to mean not a surplus and not a deficit. So if we find that in our operating budget, there is some surplus dollar still available, and we as an executive team meet and feel like there's any one of these other, or two of these other projects that are critical, and we have the funds out of the operating budget to do, and we'll bring you back those at the next meeting as well.
You'll move these over to there.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So we have the direction for that.
Thank you.
And we've got another four hours of discussion to cram into twenty minutes on our other operating budget, so we'll turn it back over to staff.
Well, on the operating budget, it's really back to Council in terms of if you have any questions.
One of the questions to start with was, at times, I've had some different input and thoughts, which is, it's in the packet here, and let me get to the right page. It's with council budget, and it's council member appropriations. And so part of that, which is different events or groups that we're asked to also participate with, we have travel and event expense. I think that's pretty clear. Five thousand dollars that we've set a budget that we're traveling for official business for the city. Community improvements per council member, per district. There was, with that is an application, is that if a group wants council support, perhaps to help with their beef boosters dinner, or hey, would you please buy tickets and come to this, you know, community nonprofit function, would we help with that? With that, we do get a lot of requests, but at the same time is, it, it's limiting. One of the items in front, in front of us, and talked with Councilman Segala about this as well, who brought this up too in the past, was in this budget that we allow a carryover. So instead of allocating a new budget of, say, bumping this up, or debating a four grand or five grand, that if your twenty-five hundred dollar budget, and you don't spend that for what we're talking about, it allows it to carry over to the next year. So if you had two thousand dollars remaining, your budget next year is forty-five hundred. And then if, if baseball, who's having a dinner, and there's a sponsorship that you could participate in that, or, or the soccer group. So one of the suggestions I'm proposing to Council, if there's other suggestions with this, is that the twenty-five hundred, there was some debate on how this works, but it allows a carryover. So if a balance, then that carries over to next year, but the budget then would be, if you will, forty-eight hundred, forty-nine hundred. I don't think this is brand new to what we're saying. It's just doing this again for this next year, and what council members think about that.
We've never, we've never done that in the past. Why is it necessary to do now? In fact, not only have we never done it in the past, but if you look at what's been expended during the course of the year, we're not even using what we have now. So I have no problem with, if it's your request, increasing from twenty-five hundred to five thousand. That aspect, I think, is fine. But the carryover, just keep building a fund that you can use, I'm, I'm not really in favor of.
Well, I think, sure. And I think part of it was a carryover of one year. So it couldn't just build up over a period.
But the obvious result of that is next year to be to carry over again. And it's never been necessary in the past. Indicate to me the compelling reason why it needs to be done now.
Okay.
Mayor, may I interject for a moment?
Yeah.
On the administrative side of it, the accounting side, if you will. Carrying something over, that is, carrying an appropriation forward that is not typically carried forward, creates a bit of an administrative headache. I don't want to go so far as to say it's a slippery slope, but it's just one more thing that staff has to go out of its, out of its way to do. And without specific direction, it's the kind of thing that kind of slipped through the cracks. If it were going to be done, I would simply ask that we include it in the budget resolution, that, you know, that and, and the other specific appropriation that is to be carried, unspent appropriation that's to be carried forward should be referenced. So Council has a, has a basis for which to do that.
Because you can always, along the lines of what Mr. Roberts is indicating, in the budget the next year, you could just modify the amounts that you have there if you want to reflect what you didn't use the year before, and increase the amount because it wasn't used. But to have a policy that just says, you can, you can, I don't want to use the word hoarded, but if you just don't want to use it now, you can build it up and then use it discretionarily somewhere else when, when the time comes. But I just don't, I don't approve of that. Okay, so with that, and one of the. Okay, so with that, and one of the things you had said before, if we wanted to increase it, which you said there isn't pressing from all council members, but if we were to take it from 25 to 35, why the increase? Is I think the dynamics for which using that and understanding policy, I think also has been left to some interpretation and so forth. So with that of, of a lot of times, I don't go to events because of exactly how to utilize this, this policy. So a lot of the events, which I will say, I pay out of my own pocket, and I know many of you pay and contribute as well as your pocket. The other part is, in some of this and expanding, would be able to say, hey, no other council member's going to this event, so I could buy a ticket and go to that one. And I think it helps to spread that out and utilize it. I, I totally get the carryover. I, I was trying to maybe present that in an easier fashion before the counting, but if, if Dennis put what you said, and if the council would endorse, then if we take that either 5,000 and 5,000, or we take it 25 to 3500, yes, I would, I would ask for that increase.
I'm okay with 5,000 and 5,000. I'm not okay with the carryover.
Well, I think, I think that, that, we had talked about that and, you know, we had put in a max of 5,000. So in other words, you couldn't carry it over for four years. So the max would have been 5,000. So we get to the 5,000 one way or the other, either we allocate it or not. So then if, if the council feels that we don't want to do the carryover because it's an accounting, you know, issue. Because I know we carry over fleet, you know, fleet purchase money all the time, right? If the police department didn't use their money, it carries over, no? Or is it a new allocation?
No, only if the money is encumbered by a purchase order.
Okay.
The only, other than those types of purchases, the only, the only unspent appropriations that are typically carried forward are capital appropriations. Capital projects.
So then I think what I would like then is the opportunity to, if, for example, I know, and I appreciate Melissa sending us balances. I know I have a balance in the community improvement one, right? We, I think we all spent on the brick for the pool and some people might have spent it for other things. I think that's the only thing that I've spent it on. I do have, then I'm going to talk to Mark about it, there's a nonprofit that's doing a citizenship workshop at the end of June that I would like to sponsor. The sponsorship would be just using the senior center for them to do their event. And there is a cost from, from the Parks Department, but I would like to have the opportunity if, for example, it's the end of the fiscal year, I can't roll over the improvement fund, to have the opportunity maybe to transfer it to the Parks Department. I know Chris and I have talked about doing some more cultural events at Zumo Park, and if I had $2,000 in my account, I would like the opportunity to transfer it to his department to use for cultural events for the next fiscal year. So I don't know if that's something we could do. It's definitely not carrying it over per se, but taking what we have and putting it in another department for future, for a future fiscal year. So is that something that could, could be done?
Ask the, ask the.
Because I know Chris and I've talked about using some of that money, right?
So from city council department to community services department.
Yeah, yeah, it would still be across, it'd still be across fiscal years. That would be something where unless we're specified by resolution, would be potentially problematic.
Yeah, you got some auditor issues coming into play there.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I mean.
But, hang on, okay, go ahead. Just hold on. So there, there's two items in front of us, and I want to clear this up and I want, we have a victory in front of us. I don't want to lose it. As you have, we're a consensus of five and five. So I want to say to the council, there seems to be consensus with that. The next item that you're presenting, and I had some discussions with Mark about this, but though it's, we do have a policy on the use of, of those funds. And perhaps I know you're asking for a policy interpretation, how we do that right now, but in effort of time, that policy question could actually be answered or work, you could work with the city staff outside of this meeting to facilitate that or review that. We don't need a consensus.
Yes.
Because we're, we don't have a policy issue in front of us.
They can come back the next meeting with an idea on that.
Okay.
Well, and I've got an idea right now. What you could do is you could, you could designate that money to donate to the Tulare Joint Union High School Foundation, which is outside our organization, and designate to them that you're going to specifically have youth projects that you want that provided for, and they'll accommodate you in that regard.
Okay.
That wouldn't be a problem. Is that correct, Mr. Roberts?
Yeah.
Yeah, they'll take.
If you, if you're designating that, you're specifying that it be spent within the same fiscal year, that would not be a problem. It's just, it's the carrying forward of an appropriation that's the issue.
Well, it's, the problem with what he was doing before is, is it's within our organization going to, it's just cross. This is an outside organization.
Mark, so on June 1st of any fiscal year, if one of the council members said, I want to take $2,500 from my account and move it to the park, the city's parks department to use it for some event, so it's within the same fiscal year, but from one department transferred to another department, can they do that?
Oh, yes, if I misunderstood, I apologize. Yes, the, the, there could be a, a transfer, a transfer can be made within the same fund at any point during the fiscal year with the city manager's authority. It does get a little tricky when it's council member appropriations, because that's a different level, but I don't believe would be, there is, there is no general or governmental accounting best practice on this, except that normally council member appropriations are a different animal. However, from a finance perspective, I would not have, have an issue and we could certainly create a policy or amend the policy such that we could account for it, where if that specific council member directed the city manager or asked the city manager to make that transfer, which the city manager otherwise has the ability to do, again, within the same funding source, then we could affect that transaction, yes, within the same fiscal year.
But it'd be a problem to, to give it to the other department or transfer it to the other department, instructing them to hold it until the next fiscal year.
Yes, yes, that would be a problem.
That's why, that's why my suggestion was to give it to a foundation outside of the city organization with direction for, to them to use it in a specific manner, if they will accommodate them. And I know, I think that for youth purposes, the high school foundation will do something like that.
Yes, and as long as that happens by June 30 every year, that's not a problem.
Well, I think, I think.
Well, I don't think, as long as the transfer to that foundation happens during.
Well, it would be a check.
That'd be their problem, not ours.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I appreciate that, and I think what we'll do is, on June 17th, if we figure something out, I'll make a motion. It's part of the budget. I think it should be appropriate at that time to, to do that, so. But I'll look into the foundation.
So, yeah, thank you for being at the podium. I want us to jump into any of the pending operational budget items. Okay, so council members, kind of circling back, we went through the CIP debate forwards and backwards. Any questions on the operational budget? Okay, Mr. Sagala.
Yeah, so I think going on that same thing, I know we had money for the arts allocated in this fiscal year. It was $50,000 that was set aside for the arts.
In the current fiscal year, 25.
Current fiscal year. So if those funds are not used, then that, we have the same issue we were just talking about.
Yes.
And so I think what I had, I just need some direction, and you don't have to answer now, but send me an email or, I looked in the budget and I couldn't find $50,000 for the next fiscal year in the budget.
Yes, I don't think we put 50,000.
Okay, so I'd like to, to visit that issue, so whenever that's appropriate.
Well, right now, if you say you want that and you have others that agree, just like we did everything else.
Yeah, I mean, I think I like, I mean, because I mean, I, I would hope it rolls over, but it's not going to roll over.
It's not.
So I'd like to see if we can try to expend that money, and then I'll take responsibility of not putting together stuff with staff to be able to expend it this fiscal year. So I'd like to be able to, to put it in next year's budget, and then I know the vice mayor's showing some interest in the arts stuff, so that we work diligently to spend the money somehow, but I think it's important to keep it. So that was one question, and so it's not going to roll over, so I'd like to see if there's consensus to keep it.
Can you define what you mean? I mean, I've had trouble with that in the past.
Well, I think what we did is, the vice mayor.
Let me finish.
Yeah.
I've had trouble with the concept in the past, and now we've gone another year without anything being done, so give me, give me some meat and bone, so I know what it is, I'm providing a consensus.
So, so the, the idea of the, the $50,000 towards the arts was to get the city to do some, support some arts programming. The previous, you know, economic development director and staff were concerned that we were adding another task to them. So that's not the goal. The goal is not to create an arts department. The goal is not to give staff, hey, you're in charge of this arts funding. The idea was to come up with the process that would allow nonprofits and community members, they wanted to paint a mural, they wanted to do a beautification project, they wanted to do a symphony, they wanted to do something related to the arts, that there would be city money there, and that we would work with some community, some process that included community members that would vet those applications and then recommend to the council to expropriate those funds. So the idea was not to create a whole new department or have Mark now be in charge of what's the arts or not. So that would be the idea, is come up with that process. We talked about it, we haven't finalized it, but that's the concept, is that we would have a little bit of money, so if someone wanted to do a mural or something in our city, there'd be a little bit of money for that. So that, that would be the intention for that funding.
What I, what I had understood, bringing this up, this wasn't on my mind, was that before we were going through this, that it was $50,000, if you will, put like in a lockbox. And that 50,000, maybe that's not the right dynamic for what the city does, but it was 50,000 put in a lockbox, and then when an idea presented itself, that then we would make a consensus on that at that point.
Yes, that would not be a city manager decision. We'd bring it back to council for a vote.
So I, with you mentioning that and hearing that, I was already under the assumption that that 50,000 was tucked away somewhere because it was previous money. I get what Mark shared with us tonight, and that's not the case, but that, that would have been my understanding. So Councilman Sagala bringing that up, that we had the process before, that's not in this budget, I'll look to council if that's, if we're clear, or if there's more questions, that if we want to do that again this year. Because my understanding, it takes a new action and set that aside for the same objectives as before. We have an okay?
Yes.
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 Okay. Next, next item, yes.
And then the, and the last thing, I did talk to staff, I did talk to the city manager about not kind of messing with the budget per se, but maybe a listing in the future as to things that the council is supporting, like for example, we've allocated money for the library, library, we've allocated money for our lobbyists, we've allocated money for TCAG, we've allocated money for the arts, we've allocated money, things that the city council has done, you know, allocated money for baseball, softball, that is just somewhere on one list. You know, I don't need to rearrange the entire budget process, but that there's somewhere where we can all look at and say, hey, these are the things the city is supporting, outside of funding for police and fire, but things that we choose as a council to support that are not necessarily operations per se. So that's the, the one thing that I asked the city manager to, see if they can compile that list.
So I just, I just need a little bit more clarification, because I, I think I understood you a little differently than right now, and maybe, Jose, if you can send me an email, this would be very helpful. I, I don't think it makes sense for us to do that in terms of building a budget around being able to do that, but if I understand, because we have certain fund accounting set up already, it's, you know, unfortunately fairly complicated, but complicated to create, not complicated to understand. If, if I know exactly the kind of things you're talking about, like, because at one point I thought you were talking about basically other organizations, so council said, we're going to contribute so much to the chamber this year and so much to a nonprofit. Now I hear, I'm thinking you're saying it's more like the things we were just talking about, like, I want to use my $5,000 to support the, you know, this library, or I have to have a better understanding of what you're looking for. We can better write a report that pulls from different accounts that gives you that? If you could just think about it a little bit more and, and send me an email so that I'll, I'll understand more specifically, and then I can ask you more questions, we'll be able to get you what you want if I.
Sure, no, yeah, just a report at that point, yes. And that'll be it.
Councilmember Maderas? Councilmember Sarah? I have no questions or other comments either.
Counsel, thank you so much. That concludes today's workshop. You gave us a good list of things to be working on. We'll huddle as a group tomorrow and go through those, make sure we're all on the same page. If you have any other things that come up between now and the next council meeting,